What's in the contract? What's in the contract? That's what is gonna be pertinent to what this city is able to do to ensure that quality service and accountability are our top priorities in ensuring that our people get the service they deserve.
We, we are... That's okay. And I'd be happy to talk offline, but we can't do that because then we have to let everybody speak. But I get, I understand your passion. Okay. And I will be available to talk to you after this. Okay. Councilmember Lockett.
Yes ma'am, may I just rise to speak to, uh, uh, I wanna say that I think the process was great. I think the, uh, both of the finalists were great, and I think everybody had some ups and some downs. Uh, but I just gotta be honest with you, I gotta take one for the team. Uh, since I've been a council member, Waste Management has been a great corporate partner. Anytime we did, we made a request to them, they honored that request. Anytime I picked up the phone and called Mr. Vernon, I, I, only problem I have is I'm glad, I'm upset that everybody didn't have his number. Because I never had a problem. Anytime my constituents called me about, uh, Waste Management issue, I'm on the phone to say, hey. And I got results. And so, over the thirty years that Waste Management has been here, they have hardworking employees and they've worked hard to solve the problems. So I just wanna give them their kudos and just say, now, cards, I like a new scrappy company that is trying to make some market share. I think that's great. But on this vote, I gotta take one for the team. I gotta support the people that have supported me and my city over the last thirty years in garbage, uh, pickup. Not to say they were perfect, but my thing is that I dance with people to dance with me. And that this has been a situation where we've been in a relationship and I don't have a problem, so that's just my two cents.
So, can I say something?
Councilmember Brown, Councilmember, um, Councilmember Brunson, then Councilmember Brown.
Okay, I just wanna say that, um, I'm not gonna lie, I am, I'm torn because I'm, I'm upset. Because I felt like as long as we have been in a relationship with Waste Management, I'm like, why are we even sitting at this table? You know, because I feel like if we had whatever con- issues or concerns, you all should have been the first to come and say, I'm gonna do this. Now, I'm not gonna lie, I have not had an issue with Waste Management. I haven't. People have called me about it, and I've called it, it has got resolved. I had, I'm not gonna lie and say that it's been bad. And I was at the council meeting last year when Fred came, when the other Mr. Pennington came, I was there and I was like, they need to do better. They do. Because for somebody to be, I have never known anybody, anybody else besides Waste Management in Pine Bluff. And it's not about the re- the length of the relationship, it's about, okay, if you know we doing this, why are y'all just kinda nonchalant like, okay? Because the thing is, you, you can't be replaced. And that's the reality of it. You can't be replaced. But then I look back and I say, okay, so those things did get corrected. Things did get better. I'm not gonna lie about that. But what does that look like moving forward? Don't just do something in the meantime to think that's gonna be like, oh, okay. Now we did this, it's gonna be okay. Because that's not how this gonna work. As you can see, it's a whole process. And people's lives gonna be affected. Wait, this is a big decision. I don't make decisions overnight. Like, for me, I process different. Other people, you know, I can't speak for other people, but for me, I don't take decisions lightly like this. And I don't take them lightly to the point where I'm, you know, fed so much information to where I, I'm kinda like overwhelmed. So for me, this is a major decision. We have employees. What does that mean for employees? You know, that's a question that I have. What does that mean for employees? Um, why did you all extend the contract? If you knew we were in this type of situation where we were looking at other companies, why not extend the contract till we work that out? Because I, I'm sure the option was out there. I wasn't a part of the process team, but I'm just saying. If you've been in a relationship this long with us, why didn't you extend the contract so we can work this? Because I would have been doing everything that I could have done to keep it. Okay, well, let me make sure I don't have anything else to say. But, um, you know, like I said, I know it's been complaints, I understand that. Um, I know it's been issues. I don't know anything about cards for what I have read. And I have concerns about them. Because I'm like, I don't under- I have concerns about everybody. I'm not just gonna sit here and say, I, I got a concern, just a concern with you. I have concerns with them too. Because again, reading this stuff on the internet and you under investigation, okay, it's an investigation. It might not be true. But what if it is true? Then what? We stuck with a company that has all of these allegations and legal things, and I'm, you know, it's, it's just a lot. So for me, this is a major decision. And the same reservations I have with you all and the things that you all need to do, I have with them too. So I, it's a lot for me. That's my comment. I don't have any, I did have a question about what, um, the employees would do if the tr- if the contracts switched. Because again, it's about quality of life. These are jobs here, these are people here, they have families here. All of this stuff is important. And for me, it's important to know what that means for them. If we get another company here. And I know that Waste Management owns the landfill here. What does that mean? Where is that going? If we get a new company?
What we'll do is, um, afford an opportunity for questions to be answered, uh, after we finish with the questions of the members. And just a correction, they don't own the landfill.
Oh, okay.
They have a contract with the county, the county owns the landfill.
Okay.
Um, Councilmember Brown?
I'm thinking there. Um, and I was kinda going back to what Councilmember Lockett was saying about, uh, basically staying with the company that he's been with all this time. And, and I guess my question to him would be, so we're supposed to pay a higher rate to keep the same company, to get the same amount of service that we know our people deserve? Or do we take a lesser rate and get lesser quality just to keep the company that we've already had? And, and so, and, and that's, I, I think that's an important thing to try to consider here. Because we put out an RFP, we put the things in the RFP that, you know, we felt as a city would best serve our citizens. And the other companies that submitted proposals had no problem with it. Sure, we can do exactly what your RFP says. But then Waste Management has pages of exceptions. Because they don't wanna do what the City of Pine, what's in the best interest of the citizens of the City of Pine Bluff. They just wanna just do business. And, and, and I have an issue with that. Um, you have things in here, you don't even wanna pick up TVs. I don't know, why? You know, no, um... What's that? So what exactly are people supposed to do with TVs? And so, yeah, what, how, how, what's that process?
I'm gonna ask that you deal with this and not go back and...
Okay, okay, that's fine. You know, also, as far as, um, you know, you kept asking in the contract, make a more clear definition of what bulky waste is. And all of these different things, and it's like you were just trying to find a way to not go along with the RFP any way you could. Um, you know, when it came to providing services for elderly or people with special needs, you had, you had an exception to that. You know, you said, oh, well, as long as it's a hundred feet from the door, then a hundred feet from the curb, we'll get it. I mean, why would that happen to be an exception? What if it's a hundred and five feet, you're not gonna pick it up? You know, so i- i- you found issue with almost every piece of the RFP. And, and for someone who's done business with the City of Pine for thirty plus years, I think we deserve better than four or five pages of exceptions to a contract when we're not really asking for much. I, I just have a problem with that. Um, you know, you didn't wanna replace the carts. You said, oh, we're already doing business here. We don't wanna do the carts. Well, everybody else did, nobody else had a problem with it. So even if you had to do that, what's so hard about that? What's so hard about making sure that our trucks are, are running and making sure the trucks aren't breaking down? And you're having to go to Little Rock or somewhere else to get a truck, and it's taking two weeks for people to get their trash picked up? But you're offering a better rate, but what type of quality are we getting? We're not getting quality. And I know Councilmember Lockett said, every time I pick up the phone and call you, then, oh, you answer, you get, you get it done. But what about the citizens that call and have to sit on the phone for thirty or forty minutes? Believe me, I've done it. Waiting for someone to, to talk to you, and then when you get on the phone, they'll say, well, where are you at? Oh, I'm in Arkansas. Oh, this is the area that services California. Let me switch you over. After I've already been on the phone for twenty or thirty minutes. I've done it myself, because people have called me with complaints. And I didn't have your direct number, and maybe that was my fault that I didn't have it. But I shouldn't have to have it because your customer service should be able to connect me within, within a few minutes and a reasonable amount of time so I can get my complaint out. Because what if I'm not calling and the citizen's calling? So our citizens are supposed to wait thirty or forty minutes to talk to you to say, hey, our trash wasn't picked up? You know, you say you have a local number, but you call the number, it gets switched over to Tennessee? I mean, it's just not right. And, and you can throw in that, hey, we had a, uh, we have another alternative offer. What's the alternative offer? The same service we've always had that we can't do anything about when you don't do your job? That's the alternative? I, I just, alright, let me move on. Uh, you, you, you want, you don't wanna cap on the CPI. So you want us to pay more? You know, CPI goes up seven, eight percent, you want us to pay eight percent? Nobody else, no one, no one else had a problem with four percent cap. Nobody. You're the only ones. You had an exception for everything that we asked for in our, um, in our proposal. You had, you wanted an exception or exemption or something like that to it. And for, for you to be here for this long and, and not have enough consideration to say, you know what? What they're asking for is not that unreasonable. You want us to call in for bulky waste and you see it out there when you're running your routes. The driver drives right past it, sees it, and then someone has to call to get them to come pick it up. Why is that? You're, you're already on the route. It would just be a simple radio answer, hey, we have bulky waste at, you know, Thirtieth and Plum. And just come pick it up. Why should a person have to go and wait on the phone for thirty or forty minutes to say, hey, I have bags of leaves out here, when they're clearly visible from the curb? You know, those types of things, you know, being, being with someone for thirty or forty years, it seems like some things you have to just be, you know, hey, you know, we can do that, we can handle that. And submit a decent bid for it. Your bid was way higher than everybody else's. You know, to truck, to provide the services. Was that except for one? Except for one. You were third. Um, to provide services that we feel that our citizens deserve. You know, and if there's a problem, if there's some, something happens, you basically are not picking up trash or not doing what you're supposed to do, we have to take you to, what'd you put in here? Uh, we have to take you to, where is it? The United States District Court for the Eastern District of Arkansas in order to have any type of recourse or have any type of resolution to any problems that you have. You know, that's just unacceptable. You don't wanna take responsibility for not doing what you're supposed to do. So I guess, my question again, Councilmember Lockett, are we supposed to accept lesser quality? I guess with lesser money, with less quality, less money, or offer, I guess, what everybody else is offering, but pay more for it? So which one is it?
Councilmember, um, Mays.
Thank, thank you all. Uh, very interesting. And we're talking about some trash now. You know what I'm saying? Trash is big business. It's big business. Don't take it for granted. That's what we're talking about, some trash. And it's, it's, it's huge. But the thing about it, we have to make it all work for the good for everybody. For everybody. Uh, once again, thank you all, just listening. Whatever it takes to make Pine Bluff continue to be a better city in here, would you all help us? That's all we're asking for. Some people look at Pine Bluff like a city that really don't care. But I do. I can speak for myself, and we do. The Vernon, you have, you have been good to, to me, to Pine Bluff, you know? I'm, I'm a full-term alderman. And I remember when we first started, Waste Management, we had to get to a certain point. Now, it's gonna take a long time, a while, for another company to get to that point, to keep this trash moving. We're talking about some trash now. At first, people were throwing trash out the, out the windows and everything, we got it under control. You see I have some paper around, you, you know, you can't get it rid of, oh, you know? It's, it's, I'm just saying, I'm gonna support you all. Support you all. But just stay on that road that you own and watch the outsiders that's trying to get into your ear. I know how they do. Everybody, nobody, they don't, people don't like Pine Bluff, other cities. We got a great population, great, great sports. But they don't, nobody wants Pine Bluff to grow, but we're gonna grow anyway. So I sup- I support you all. No offense, but I just, I, I have a vote. And I'm not gonna get voted out because I voted the wrong way. Y'all have a good day. Thank you all.
So Councilmember Fells, and then Councilmember Denton.
Well, first of all, I did just wanna wish you happy birthday, Mayor.
Thank you.
I do have comments, but if it is okay, I did have some questions for cards that would, I'll be able to inform some of the comments that I have.
And if they can, and I'm, I'm keeping notes so that we'll allow each, um, group to come up and address some of the issues and questions that are, are evolving from this discussion. Are you wanting to do it now?
Well, yes.
Okay, I'll, I'll.
Um, well, good evening, my name is William, um, I just, what was your name?
My name's Jason Fitzgerald.
Okay, nice to meet you, Mr. Jason. Uh, one of my first questions is, are you all currently servicing Bentonville, Arkansas right now?
We are not.
Okay. Um, the reason I asked that question is because I believe it was stated that Bentonville, that they did make that switch for, from my...
Now, Springdale.
Oh, okay. Well, from my understanding of what did happen in Bentonville is, I guess they did have a selection committee that did recommend cards, if I'm not mistaken. But the city council elected not to go with that recommendation, and they chose to retain their current, um, um, garbage service. I did wanna make that clarification. Um, at this current moment, do you know how many trash cans and roll-off, um, containers you're gonna have to order in order to service Pine Bluff? What's that?
We do, it was in the RFP.
Wha- what is that number?
Currently, right now, it's thirteen thousand five hundred homes.
Okay. And my next question would be, have you ever had to order that many carts at one time? And if you have, what's the shortest amount of time that you made that order and got them in?
Sure. Great question. When we went through the process, answering the questions, I'm not sure if that's me or if that's someone else. We, we were able to provide those references, um, as recent as the City of Paris, where there's about nine thousand homes. Uh, and on top of that, we pick up multiple services, brush and bulk. We also provide all the commercial services. There's over fourteen hundred commercial services that we provide. We're able to provide those deliveries within thirty days to the City of Paris. Uh, we were able to provide, um, all twenty-four thousand times two because we provided in Springdale trash recycling and also a yard waste ultimate proposal for carts. So there are over fifty thousand carts deployed in the City of Springdale in about thirty days.
You said how many?
Fifty thousand. So transition is not something that's new to us. It's, um, as a fairly young company, it's something that we've had to embrace. Although we are fairly young, an eight-year-old company, we're comprised of a leadership group with over three hundred years of experience in the waste industry. Myself, twenty-two years. I know I look like I'm twenty-five, but I'm not. Uh, but I've been doing this for quite some time, and I'm fully aware of what it takes to, to manage, to transition, and take care of a, a waste contract.
Okay, so you're saying you got fifty thousand order within, what was that, thirty days, you said?
We had it within thirty days delivered to, to the City of Springdale.
Okay, and were they also placed on the residents in their yards within thirty days as well?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, my next question would be, in the, and did you also have to get new trucks and things like that for Springdale as well?
Yes, and, and each one of these contracts that I'm speaking of, Springdale, Paris, um, and also this one, all went through the same type of process. Um, I, I know that it's, it's probably new material that's on there when we're speaking of past, past bids or RFPs that were placed. There's always circumstances or different scenarios that go into each one of these. Um, similar to what this has been, that particular contract as well, I can speak in, in depth on it. But, um, they also had an incumbent that they tried to negotiate with prior to. And basically, uh, were forced into going into the RFP process because those negotiations would not facilitate toward what the city was asking for. Um, ultimately, it became a time issue, um, in Bentonville, believe it or not, uh, because the council kept pushing it further and further and further back, making that start date a lot harder to obtain. Uh, it's that, and that's why we're here tonight. I understand there's a lot of questions and concerns regarding, um, our, the things that you're reading online. If, if we believed everything we read online, then we, none of us would probably leave our homes. Um, and so, I, I can tell you that we do listen to that feedback. That feedback's very important. I know Ms. Frazier brought some stuff up, and I know that she's not asking this question. But I, I think it's important to note that our team takes that very serious. Uh, we wouldn't bid these, these RFPs with the intent to put our flagship in the central Arkansas market here inside the City of Pine Bluff. It, you brought up a great question, uh, when you're talking about employees. Uh, we, we intend to have ten to fifteen, possibly twenty, based on what we feel like we can do within this community, uh, from an employee standpoint. Uh, our office will be held here, our call center will be held here.
Um, my next question would be, in the event that, let's just say, there are some delays with the, uh, with the carts, the roll-offs are getting in the trucks, and let's just say, every customer does not have a roll-off, trash can, whatever, by November first, what would be some of the contingencies that you would have in place in order to ins- ensure that smooth service?
I, I don't typically live in that hypothetical world, and I appreciate the question. There are different things tiered in, in that contract, the RFP, that, that give us a clear outline and penal penalties associated with not being able to obtain that. Uh, it's our intent, based on what we provided in the RFP process, to give you a transition plan that we have provided, uh, in that packet, to sit down with your team, if awarded, to make sure that you would step with us every step of the way, uh, engaged with that process and understanding that timeline and when we're gonna place those containers.
But what I'm hearing, okay, I understand that, but what I'm hearing is, on November first, if every customer does not have a container or wherever the case may be, there's no contingency plan in place?
There, the contingency plan you're asking for is, is for us to fail. And that's not our intent, to fail. We, we will have every cart, every container delivered.
Okay, I do understand that, um, we always hope for the best, but it's always important to plan, you know, for things to, um, go awry. You did mention the ten to fifteen, um, employees that you were expecting to have. Will there be any type of opportunity for, if this transition does occur, for Waste Management employees to have, um, first opportunity to those jobs, what would that hiring process be like? I don't know how much you can discuss of that, but...
Yeah, I, I think that's pretty sensitive. Um, I, out of respect for Waste Management, um, I'd like to just state that openly, any qualified employee or any qualified worker that would like to apply for a position that's available or open with us currently and/or in the future, we would consider.
Okay, then my final question is, in regards, I know it was mentioned the landfill. So where, where, where will you all be dumping? Will you be using the current landfill?
That, that was what we, what we proposed, and we had to have signed off on and also, uh, submitted back through the proposal process.
Okay, so will there be fees associated with that, or have you gotten your clearance to use that landfill and everything?
We have.
Uh, but that's all the questions that I have for now. I did just wanna, um, mention that I do respect the process that was made. Um, and I've heard, you know, some of the names that have been mentioned as a part of that process. Um, I do have great respect for those employees. Um, I've been hearing a lot during this meeting that, you know, there are substantial complaints that we've heard from cards. But as we also alluded to, there have been concerns with, you know, Waste Management before. And you all probably tired of me saying it, but, you know, I worked in the mayor's office for four years. And so, I was one of the employees who, you know, at certain different points, I would be receiving a lot of those calls. Um, you know, my trash can was, um, missed, et cetera, et cetera. It seems like there are times where they would really ramp up, and then Waste Management would come in and address it, and they would, um, die down. I think we're in a period right now where my phone doesn't ring a lot in regards to Waste Management. So I just think both, in my opinion, I think both of the companies are kind of even in that regard. Uh, I did get a chance to look at the scores again from the selection committee. I am comforted by the fact that I know that card scored a seventy-six. But I also see that Waste Management scored a seventy-three. And the lowest, um, participant, I believe they scored a seventy-four. I only mention that to just, um, state that I'm comfortable with the fact that, um, both of these companies, they did score within a decent range of one another. So it's not like if we continued with Waste Management, it would just be something drastically, uh, it would be completely out of step with the committee. Because obviously, they were comfortable to a degree, or else they wouldn't have scored that seventy-three. And then the final thing that I would just say is that my biggest concern, um, well, my biggest, the thing that's on the top of my mind right now, in addition to the Waste Management employees, is just making sure that this transition is, um, goes as smooth as possible. I think competition is good, you know, at my job. If I'm not doing my job well, you know, I, I will be replaced. Same goes for us as elected officials. So I do think it's important that Waste Management knows that. Just because we've had this relationship since the, you know, nineteen eighties, that doesn't mean anything. It's locked in, and you know, as councilmembers, if necessary, we're very serious about getting a new company if we need one, especially if our citizens are asking for that. But I also think that to do so within two months, especially when I've just heard that there's no contingency plan in place, that does have me a little concerned. So I'll just have to continue to sit here and just think about that for a little bit longer. And that concludes my remarks and questions.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Denton?
My question is to Waste Management, Vernon, well, why, why was it so hard to just accept some of these things in the contract?
He can go ahead and come and answer, yes.
These in place?
Well, I will say firstly, for me, we have a lot of attorneys. And every RFP that I, or every proposal that I submit, I have exceptions. Um, and what the, the exception that I've heard the most about tonight, um, from, from the mayor specifically, from Mr. Brown, um, about the imposition of the fines and the penalties. I have no problem with the fines and the penalties. I think that's something that is, was, uh, it was great. It was inserted by the mayor, it was, it was brilliant. Um, I'm glad she discussed that with the former mayor, and that was one of the things that they included. Uh, the majority, I say the majority, most of our, um, exceptions are just clarifications, uh, contract language, um, related to damages and summary of liquidated damages. Uh, WM should not be fined for unverified complaints, and no fines should be imposed during a force majeure event. Um, the unverifieds are complaints that happen outside of a, a formal, um, complaint process or unverified by the, um, camera systems on our vehicles. Cards has the same camera systems. We all have cameras that take a picture of a, of a lift. Uh, we have video verification now. Um, we're going to supply reports to the city so they know the complaints that come in to our local customer service with our local phone number, who will be in our Pine Bluff office. It's not going to be a one-eight-hundred number that gets sent to Tennessee anymore. It will be answered during our office hours, um, by Carla, who's sitting right here next to me. She is part of our customer service team. When Carla's out, we have backups for her. But unfortunately, we have a lot of attorneys who like to look at contract language and like clarification. Typically, uh, when we are awarded a contract or offered the award to contract, to contract with the city, those are negotiated. Um, and, and so, most of these things are just clarifications.
So they advise you not, these little simple things, they advise you not to do them?
I'm sorry?
Your attorneys advise you not to do the little simple things that was asked in these contracts?
Well, they ask to clarify some of the things in the contract, so it's...
But the state is clear here, though.
Yes, ma'am, it is. And, and, and I, and I would have loved to walk through each of the items during our interview. And, and they touched on some of them. I, I wish we could have went through them as succinctly as Mr. Brown pointed them out, and I could have touched on each item. Um, but we, we ran long and ran out of time. I, I wish I could have had two hours to speak, but we had an hour and twenty minutes. We had forty-five minutes, and we went an hour and twenty.
Um, I didn't know if anybody else had any statement. Um, I, I just would like to say this, and I think that this has been a conversation about a lot of things. Um, and whether we're looking at the scores and then making a determination at the end of the day, um, I think no one up here is hurt by this. No, you know, we will all, um, emerge from this, still continue to work well together. And, um, on this and other things. I think that there were a lot of issues raised that's still not clear. And, um, I think that I, I just wanna emphasize... That I I just want to emphasize the importance of the contract. I think that it's been made clear whether it. Could be malfeasance on the part of waste management or cards. We need assurance that we have the teeth in our contract to address it. That is the bottom line of this for me.
And I agree with you one hundred percent.
So when I get. When I got the scoring back or. The the proposals back and I'm doing my scoring, my scoring was relatively close. But the difference is, if you go back to the contract and we lay out the things that we need to protect our people. On section. Section nine. Which is the section to outline any exceptions, exceptions meaning. Everything that you City of Pine Bluff say you want done, the way you want it done in this contract. Here are the things that we might be able to do or do differently. Cards page look like this with one line that said, there are no exceptions. Waste Management look like this. Page one and two, page three and four, and I believe there's a page five. Yeah, that's this. And so when we talk about clarification, I'm very clear. That legalese means there's room for question. And even when we talk about clarification, for example. On the issue of. Requiring the performance to address issues within twenty four hours. Saying that. The the contract on page one hundred and nine of the RFP to modify the time of notification by nonperforming party. To the other party for no longer than twenty four hours to no later than fifteen business days. To the extent otherwise, waste management objects. That is not a clarification. That is a no. We ain't doing it your way. That's how that read to me. And there's a big divide between twenty four hours and fifteen business days. Fifteen business days isn't even fifteen times twenty four. That's fifteen times twenty four plus two weekends. That's what that's that's the problem for me. I like Jamie. I like Bailey. Love Jordan. That doesn't matter here. Because this is not about me supporting cards. This is not about me supporting Jamie or Waste Management or Jason. This is about me making a decision. Support y'all. And I would ask you this question. You Waste Management submitted a an alternative proposal. Going from your current rate of eighteen plus eighteen dollars and thirty eight cents. With a willingness to go down with no changes. Let's say we're gonna stay how we are with Waste Management, the City of Pine Bluff, and with our alternative proposal, just forget all that stuff you guys are talking about. Just let's keep things how they are, and we're going to go down to fifteen dollars and sixty cent? Fifteen dollars and sixty cent. That means to me that you could have been doing what we doing for fifteen dollars and sixty cent all the time. I'm not impressed by going down three dollars as a carrot for us to not address our needs and concerns. So I'm really offended, if I'm being honest, by the alternative proposal.
I I would like to speak to that.
Please.
I I can acknowledge where where the offense could be taken. I've only been here for almost four years. And it's been a work in progress to get to where we are today. I wasn't here for the original contract, and it's not necessarily. A we're gonna keep doing things the same way. All of our customer service, when I walked in on April twenty second, twenty twenty two, or whatever whatever it was, was done through a call center. We we've worked to get a local phone number, local website for the City of Pine Bluff, where it's answered here locally. I wasn't I wasn't a part of that before. And and I feel like some of the things that are being expressed here were not stated in our interview process, or we weren't able to speak to them, or we could have. We talked a lot about some of the things in twenty twenty four, in in June of twenty twenty four specifically, and we did have issues, and we did have truck issues. And we did have people issues, not people, not issues with our people, but keeping drivers, and it wasn't a Pine Bluff thing. It was it was a trash industry thing. Cards has had issues in twenty twenty four, and I'm hearing that we want to give cards grace for that time period. But we're not going to look in the fact that during twenty twenty four, we had issues. We have fixed them. We've brought in rental trucks. We've brought in new trucks. We have several twenty twenty threes and twenty twenty fours. Twenty twenty fives. So I would just appreciate the same grace that that they are being given. And 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 kind of looked at, while we do have a lot of exceptions, it's not the same contract that it was before. We we are making, and I'm I'm a horrible salesperson. Let me explain that to you right now.
You're not here to be a salesperson.
I'm a customer service person.
That's right.
And so I everyone has my sales number. We now have the nine three nine sixty nine seventy number that we want everyone to use. I'm fighting Google to get a change on a couple of their pages. We have a local website that you can do whatever you want, specifically for Pine Bluff, wm.com/pinebluff. It's linked to the city website. So I do take offense to, this is the same old, same old, because we've worked very hard to get over the last contract. And I do I do appreciate the conversation and you allowing me to to speak, so thank you for that.
And just to the point about grace, there is no grace being given to cars. They're not our contractor. We asked questions about the concerns and the issues and got clarity. I think Waste Management was given grace.
And we made impressions.
Let me say this. And and I can speak for myself. I think you've been given grace by customers. I think you've been given grace by your staff. This is not about grace and forgiveness, about past mistakes, past issues. I think the issues have been raised to give rise to the concern about how we protect ourselves. It should have happened again. I said earlier, there's nothing, nobody did any of that on purpose. If getting trucks that work here to get to the roots on time, I understand that's your priority, and when something falls through the cracks, it just falls through the cracks, and you gotta fix it. The bottom line is, we had to wait until you fixed it, and nobody got a refund. To the extent that these issues occurred. It was not automatic. So when we put things in place, so that should those things happen again, because nobody's perfect, nobody controls the market, it was industry wide. We've acknowledged that. We put things in our proposal to ensure that we have a contract that protects Pine Bluff. And I think that that was ignored. I think that saying, we don't want to do those things, let's keep things how it how they are, and we'll give you a three dollar something, some odd discount. To move forward while we improve is, to me, unacceptable. That's the issue. And in that issue, if if they came back with five pages of. Of. Exceptions, it would be unacceptable. If anybody else did, I'd be having that same conversation. So with all things being equal, who cares about the things we care about? Who demonstrated a commitment? To operate under a contract, because that's what this is, business, it's legal.
Agreed.
So who was willing to operate under the contract that is necessary to protect the residents and the property and this city, Pine Bluff? And it was them. That's the bottom line.
I would like an opportunity to address Ms. Brunson's question about.
Yes.
Can you ask it again? I want to make sure your answer correctly. You'd asked about why we didn't extend.
Yes, because I feel like, okay, you knew the contract, you knew you were up, we were doing this contract negotiation, bidding or whatever, and. It's the relationship that we have, right? Was it not saying, hey, can you extend this while we're working through this? Why was it not extended? That's a, yeah, I want to know.
Yes, ma'am. So that's and that was a two parter earlier. You'd asked about that and then taking care of our people.
Yes.
And and those, to me, went hand in hand. We we met with the mayor, the mayor-elect, I I guess, last June or twenty twenty four June, and we had talked about our problems. And then we met with her again and her staff in January, which it was toward the induct season, if I remember it. And then we met again, I believe, in March or April, and each of those times, we talked about the this specific agreement. And it got brought up about a renewal or about a, we talked about if you want to bid it out or renew it. And in the first conversation, nothing was said, and I think it was said in in the third conversation in February or April. You know, should should we bid it out or extend? We asked that question, and she stated that it was her priority to bid out all of her contracts. And 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 I, we, you know, graciously said, okay, we understand. Do you want to be open with your residents? And I applaud her for doing that, truly. But but we stated in in February and in April that you we needed time to go through that process. And so when we were asked for an extension in May of three to six months, we had to politely decline, because at that point. We didn't have, we didn't want to put our drivers in a position to where there was a three month RFP process. This this late in the game, because I I care about two things. I care about making sure the waste is picked up in Pine Bluff correctly. And then I care about my people, and my people are sitting right here, and I didn't want them, I didn't want to give a three months, three month extension. From October to December, and then these folks are worried about their jobs at Christmas time.
And I and I get that. Let's let me just clarify. My background is HR, so I'm always people, but at the end of the day. That extension could cost them not having a job at all.
Well, the other part of that is, if you only give a three month extension, that's a signal that they're very likely we're going to go with another provider, whether whether you're going to go with another provider.
Not necessarily. The signal to me is saying, okay, we trying to work through this. I'm letting you all know what's going on. But not giving them an option and saying, okay, well, I'm not gonna say anything, and now we're here, right? Now I have to figure out what I'm gonna do. I got kids, so I understand.
I I agree.
To figure out a job and what I'm gonna do, and I've been working here all these years, like, that's a problem for me. When I think about that, like, you don't put people in those type of life situations, and then we bidding on a contract, and then. They're like, well, you know, we might get the most qualified person. It might not be you, so let's be clear. It might not be one of them. So now what?
Well, that's why we pushed for it to be bid earlier in the year. We would have liked to have been bid earlier. We asked, I mean, that was what we said should happen. And it didn't, and I know that there was a lot going on. There was a lot of reasoning why it got pushed back so late in the year, and that happens. But we couldn't put our busy people in a position to be sitting at Christmas time not having jobs. And then the other, the other part of that is. We have to finish picking up the trash. That was the other part of that. We have to make it to the end of the contract. If we extend three months, that's that's a. Hey, I need to go get a job somewhere else, so in November or October, they can go to Tyson or to the Woodmill or to to wherever and grab another job, and then. We look bad because we can't finish picking up your trash during our contract period. So it it wasn't, we didn't, we took it very, very seriously. And and it was, it wasn't some, no, we're not gonna do that because we're gonna try to push them to win or or what have you. It was. We wanted to make sure that we honored our commitment to the city as well as to our people, and and it it's it was a difficult decision, much like yours is.
And I and I get it, and I want you to understand that the people make up the city, and I understand you were concerned about the trash not being picked up if they went somewhere else. But, you know, those are things that you figure out, because like in June, it got figured out, right? You know, so I. I'm more, I would be more concerned as an employer on what you have in the job.
And I'll just touch on this a little bit. When I did ask for, obviously, my first ninety days and then the the. Short time period after that were filled with a lot of. Getting in gear and getting staff, and I think I mentioned that. And I asked for a three to six month extension, knowing that that extension had been extended to Jefferson County. And assured that we're not trying to do that. We're trying to set up a process for a fair. Competitive opportunity, given that that had never happened before at thirty five years. And given some of the things I saw the previous year. But I want to add something that that I think you may have forgotten. I was told on the very front end. You re you don't, you rarely seen or never seen an extension of three months, and it probably, if we did get an extension, would be. You know, no less than a year, and I said, okay. And what came back to me was not about your people, your staff. It was that it they said no, because we don't do extensions, but what we will offer you. Is an extension of, I think it was one for two or three years and another one for five years, which is basically another contract. So in my mind, we weren't given grace. We weren't given grace, and I knew that I did not want to move forward and not do my due diligence to ensure that we got into a better contract. And I felt that Waste Management would be respectful of and responsive to that, and I was wrong. Councilmember Brown.
You pretty much answered. You kind of hit on what I was talking about, because, you know, we kept talking about the three month situation. Well, what about a year? And so where was that option? And the mayor just expressed that she's she asked for a year, but you wouldn't extend it. You said three years, five years. And so, you know, and and if you're thinking about your employees, then I would say, why not give a year and say, hey, look. We still have another year. Everybody's job's secure, and I understand it. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm not sympathetic to the employees and things like that, and and there's nothing against the employees. It's just that our job is to make sure that the citizens of Pine Bluff have the best service that they can get. And that's that's my job.
Sure.
You know, and so if that job, and 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 Waste Management had an opportunity to respond to the RFP, not have any exceptions, accept our terms, and put in a decent bid and win it. But it just didn't happen that way, and that's not the employees' fault. I would say that's more on, not maybe not you, but. Somebody else who ever created this this rate and service guide here or whatever you have, you know, maybe it's their fault, but they weren't thinking about the employees. Because they took so many exceptions to everything in our contract, they're basically saying, we don't really care what you want for the citizens of Pine Bluff. We're gonna give you what we're gonna give you. And and that's just the way I view it.
The the only thing I have to add, and I hear you on on that, and I don't get to make the exceptions. I don't, you did ask for a year in our early discussions. You're exactly right. I I was not asked for a year, I think, when when the consultant reached out. That that would have been something we could have discussed, but yes, we did throw a number out of, I don't remember the exact two or three years. That we gave to the consultant, but I don't remember, and it's not my recollection that we were asked for a year.
I wasn't asked for a year. I asked for three to six months, and I was told that that was probably unlikely, but we could try to get a year.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what I was told. So based on that conversation, my thinking was that that's what was asked for. Hey, she wants three months. I know we can't do that, but they're willing to do a year extension, and what was brought back to me is none of that. is none of that. Not three months, not six ye- six months, not a year was acceptable. I can't remember if it was two or three. It was either two or three years, or five years, which I thought was rich.
Well, I don't remember the, the specific conversation, but three to six was out of the question. And again, because we have to service you through the end of that time.
And I, and I accepted that. But it was offered to me that we, maybe we can get a year.
And, and specifically, cause I went through this with Springdale. We, we've talked, we touched on that earlier. The Springdale contract was awarded in May or June of that year. And so logistically, w- our contract ended in December. And so our drivers knew in December was when it was up. And so, there was planning involved in that. Um, and when we got to November, it was a struggle. I mean, we had folks leaving. We were pulling from other areas. And so I could not put us, you, and them in that position, um, to give six months, because they start finding other jobs. We train our people exceptionally well. They can jump to another provider. The no- the, the provider doesn't wanna wait until November second if they hire our employee. They need them two weeks ahead of time, so they can get them acclimated to their systems and trucks.
I just have one more question. Um, I'm, I'm clear, and I, I read your editorial, um, that appeared in the paper this morning. And in it, you focused on your alternate proposal and compared that to the one that we're considering in the resolution, which is not a comparison. The comparative number is the twenty-five-dollar rate, twenty-five thirty-eight. And I'm wondering why you didn't make the appropriate and honest comparison, if you were gonna draw a comparison between yourself and the company that won the, um, in the proposal decision, um, in your, in your editorial.
I wanted to draw attention to our alternate rate, because it, it is the lower rate.
I know you wanted to draw attention. I'm asking if you were gonna draw a comparison, why you wouldn't draw an honest comparison? Because your alternate rate doesn't compare if the appu- the company that won the proposal, uh, was being, what their price was based on all of our contract requirements. And your, your price, your, your, your alternate price was based on none of that.
I would say because it's hard for us to compare a company that is not here and has not made investments within the city already. So, I feel like we, with the investments we made in our hauling site, in the, at the landfill, I know it's not the same. But the investments we make in the landfill and at our hauling site, within our people, um, we should be able to look at that lower rate. And we're going to replace carts, and we're going to replace containers. I just think it's unfair for us to replace container. The container that's outside of this building is a great example that I looked at on the way in. It's in great shape. And there are many like that around town that are in great shape. And so, we'd be replacing those at the cost of your resident, at the cost to your resident. And that was, that is the reason why I pointed out. I can understand if you, um, you know, disagree with why I do that.
I just would say that the landfill and investments in the landfill has nothing to do with this. Y- you get paid for, um, your management of that landfill. And, um, and paid for rates that apparently are increasing. Um, so, I'll just stop. Any more, any further questions? Councilmember Denton.
What takes so long for Waste Management to go to their apartments to pick up those dumpsters? I just see them overflow. What, I mean, what's the problem with that?
Well, I don't think it takes too long for us to do it. Um, you know, we, we try to work better with our residential, or our multifamily residential. Some, sometimes they, sometimes they get put off on cutoff.
They don't pay. But I've gotten calls from those who own properties that do pay.
There, there are, sometimes there, the, the, just saying that. One, one of the bigger issues, other than non-payment, is overflowing containers. And when the containers overflow, and they're not cleaned up by the appropriate people at the multifamily, they continue to overflow. And a lo- and a lot of times, the trucks are not able to grab the container and service it.
They overflow because they had, the trash hadn't been picked up.
They overflow a lot of times when people do move in and move out. And that's my biggest issue, and our, our issue, and an issue cards is also gonna have. Thank you.
Did you have anything? Any, anybody else? Yes. Oh, sure.
Thank, thank you again for letting me address, uh, the council and mayor staff. Um, I know it's easy to put your competitor's name in your mouth and say what they are or they are not. I, I, I really work hard not to do that. Because I can speak to what our company can do and will do. Um, what I'm hearing tonight is not, uh, an ingrants toward a resolution, or an alternate bid. I'm hearing a company trying to defend themselves on what they presented after they found out they were not the accepted proposer. Uh, and so I feel like it's, it's an unfair process, if, if we wanna call that a process, to go through and, and have a committee go through and diligently go through every single piece of this information that was required. I, I find it hard to believe that others, uh, based on this meeting tonight, would wanna bid that in the future. If this is the way it will go. I, I'm not saying that the outcome's been determined. But I have heard from, from many, many members tonight, basically saying that they've already turned off, uh, their minds on accepting what this committee has spent so much time and efforts to, to deliver. Um, I think it's important to note that our company, uh, if you've read in the, in the packet, and as the mayor has basically explained, does want to invest in Pine Bluff. Mr. Mays, we wanna be a part of this community. We wanna be a flagship here to provide jobs for others. To have a company that we can be proud of in the next thirty to thirty-five years. It's easy to cast stones on a young company when you're the, when you're the number one company in the world. But if you're the number one company in the world, why are we here today? Why are we still here talking about something that we could've taken in care of a year ago, two years ago, three months ago? I understand what Mr. Vernon's saying. However, I like to speak to facts, not feelings. If we're concerned about staff, then we need to make sure that we're doing our job every day. I tell our team, it doesn't matter if it's a five-year contract. You may be judged on the last day of that contract, because you didn't do your job. That's why it's so important that we're unified in making sure that everyone's aligned with carrying out what's required in that contract. And that's why it's important that everyone here understands that everything that was placed in this RFP, we understood. We responsibly bid that. But now we're talking about going an alternate way, which doesn't even meet the requirements of the standard that you've put in place. If anything, that bid is, is not valid. That's a no bid. Not a relevant bid for you to consider. So, I, I just wanna be very clear. I, I'm sorry for having to, to make that point. I just, I've been doing this a long time, like I'd stated, and, and I feel like it's important for me to at least put that out there. And, and at least give you the opportunity to hear that, um, a- and to know that, uh, you know, I, I have this, this passion for, for our people, for their people, for anyone in this industry. But I feel like, for us to be fair, for us to, to make sure that we're going through the process the correct way, if this is a process, then we're here tonight to discuss what that committee presented to you. Not have open discussion going on for weeks about the topic that you implored or employed someone to help you with. So, uh, that may have hurt us, I'm not sure. But I, I can tell you that I would feel pretty bad if I didn't get that out on the way home. So, wanted just to let you know that we are proud to present our proposal as stated. Um, we, we are happy to answer any questions, to follow up with the contingencies. Um, I wasn't probably as clear as I should've been. With that transition, we have what we call or consider an orange crew, an orange team. Twenty twenty-four helped us build that. We hurt, we hurt our customers, our residents. So, on day one, regardless of employment, if we hire one person or ten people, we already have a staff of fifteen to twenty ready to go. Ready to pick up your routes. They'll, they're, if awarded, they will start tomorrow routing everything. To stay consistent, to stay on task. This is, this is a very serious overtaking. And we, we know that. And that's why we bid it as such.
And just to be clear, the orange team is a transition team. It's a temporary team that you drop into a jurisdiction to help with the transition, correct?
These are, these are trained specialists that, that can adapt and, and are, are very, uh, skilled in any line of business that we operate. And will run with those, those drivers, um, as they start, if they're not familiar with this area. So they'll, they'll already have that time vested in understanding each route, so there are no interruptions.
Mayor Clow.
Yes, I see.
Just Councilmember Fails, then Councilmember Mays.
Yes.
So I did just wanna, first of all, reiterate my concern in terms of the transition. It's not just in relation to staffing. It's also in relation to the roll-off containers, the trashcans, and also the trucks. I do understand that, you know, you say that you've gotten it ordered within a short period of time in other cities, but I do know from limited experience with the city, when you're ordering trucks and things of that nature, sometimes there can be delays. And I did see where, you know, in Springdale, I believe they announced that they were gonna be switching over to you, to you in July of twenty twenty-three, and that that contract would go into effect in December first of that year. So they had a five-month transition period, whereas the city of Pine Bluff, we would only have a two-month period, two-month period. But I also wanted to respond to your comments about the, um, the selection process. Um, I'll just speak for myself. I do respect that selection process and the committee that was assembled. I, I, I have no doubt that they took this process seriously, that they reviewed those applications, and that they were, you know, genuine in their scores. But at the end of the day, as elected officials, ultimately, we're the ones who are responsible for hiring this garbage service. And so, I don't think it would be an affront, that, the recommendation that we get from that selection committee, it's exactly that. It's just a recommendation. And so, it's not necessarily an affront on the process if we choose not to go with that recommendation, just like they did in Bentonville. They received, the city council received a recommendation, and in a seven-to-o vote, if I'm correct, they decided to retain the service with their, um, current provider. So, I did wanna just, just for the citizens who are watching, I didn't want anyone to think that we're disregarding that selection committee if we have a disagreement with them.
Understood. And, and I can tell you that we've, more often than not, uh, we've only had one of those happen, and that was in Bentonville. And, and like I said, it was more time constraint more than anything. Um, I can tell you that we, our vendors have already supplied their, um, recommendations and letters stating that they will have and are slotted to provide those trucks. We already have rentals in place as well. That would be a contingency, uh, to be facilitated if, if they do not make the arrival date as stated. Uh, we do slot trucks every year in anticipation for new contracts, and we do upgrade and infiltrate new, new equipment in each one of our market areas. Um, I would say we probably have the newest fleet in the state of Arkansas, just based on the contracts we do have. I can tell you that when we took over Russellville, uh, Arkansas, just this past year, we were given a two-month window and were able to facilitate, actually started earlier than that because we were told that, um, the previous company, which was Waste Management, was not able to facilitate. So, we did take that over quickly. And we're able to assemble that. And that's because we do have a team that has that orange crew. And, I mean, I still carry my CDL. If I have to get in a truck, I tell them, if we get to me, we probably should go back to the top. Uh, but we do have people available and ready to go. Yes, Mr. Mays.
Councilmember Mays.
Yeah, thank you. I will say that, you know, don't think both companies now, don't think the city council does not watch things that goes on in the city of Pine Bluff. Most people take us for granted in Pine Bluff. I mean, really. They hear a lot of bad things on the news or whatever, but we have some good people here. Whoever get the contract, remember one thing, I'm watching, you know? The phone calls I get in my ward, I, I respond to one hundred percent of my phone calls, you know, bo- both, both companies. Don't take Pine Bluff for granted. It's a lot of things that they say on the news, what about Pine Bluff, they call us this. But we on the move. Been on the move.
And that, and that's why we're here, Mr. Mays. We, we, we believe in that. And that's why we wanna invest, uh, in this market, in this city.
And I, uh, before it's over with, before the end of next year, a lot of people would have to get into Pine Bluff. We on the move. Watch. I can see it. Look what, look what I'm saying, look what they're saying. These are your leaders up here. Don't take us for granted. These are smart people. They take us for granted. All the news tomorrow, Pine Bluff, Crime Bluff, all that stuff. We don't wanna hear that. Watch time. Them cities gonna start, their people gonna start coming to us. Watch.
Understood. I wanna be clear that I, I did not say that we, we have that feeling or temperature toward Pine Bluff.
No, I know. It, it's in the atmosphere, not, not here, what you are. It's in the atmosphere, though. Other people say it. And I correct them. I love Pine Bluff. I love being born and born and raised here and be here.
We'd love to be here as well.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, what I think?
I call for the vote.
Heard everything. Um, I'll call a vote. I just wanna say one thing. Um, this is about the contract. And we can't say that we don't want our people taken for granted, and we don't represent them and their interests when we are drawing contracts to make sure that they are protected during a five-year contract term. That is all this is about. And we give grace, things happen. But we can't, one year, say that Waste Management is a monopoly, say that they engaged in breach of contract, say that there should be no more excuses, that people should get refunds. And when none of that is really addressed, we get to a point, and, and hear our people say they want fines, and they want protection. And get to a point where we can ensure that a contract affords them that, and ignore the process and ignore those protections in the contract. With that, I'll call the vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Mays?
No.
Councilmember Holcomb?
No.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Lockett?
No.
Councilmember Brunton? Councilmember Denton?
Yes.
Councilmember Fails?
No.
Can I say something?
Sure.
And, and, you know, and I respect every council member's opinion and their vote. Um, but what we're doing now is, so, here are the two options. So, either we take the twenty-five-dollar option from Waste Management that gives us the protections that we were talk- what, what's going on? I'm sorry? I was about to vote, was finished. How many we got? Okay.
It, it failed? Five to two? You, you said that? Okay.
Okay. And so, so the options we're left with here are, I guess, not going with Cards at all, going with Waste Management, and either paying twenty-five dollars and sixty cents per resident to get the protections that we say that we need for our citizens, or we can go with the alternative that gives us no protections and pay fifteen dollars and eighty-five cents. So which one of those options are we talking about? That's what I wanna know. I mean, that's, that's what I'm, I'm wondering. That's because it's, that's what the question is. Either twenty-five dollars and get the protections, or fifteen dollars and eighty-five cents and not get the protections.
I, so my thing is this. I have reservations about both companies. And
So we just voted against one, so what are we gonna do, though?
I know, I know. And, and I, and, listen, I've been up here struggling the whole time.
So, Madam Attorney pointed out that they were ranked, because we didn't do a one-and-done, and that there was still a second company, GFL, and that Waste Management, you said, was third?
I'm, I'm, I'm not, who had seventy-four? Uh, Cards had seventy-six?
So, Cards had seventy-six, GFL had seventy-four, Waste Management had seventy-three.
So Cards had 76, GFL had 74, Waste Management had 73. For me, that's not a major difference.
Okay, well, let's go back to this again.
Okay.
$25 for the protections, $15, no protections. So which one of those options are we going with here? That's what I'm asking. That's, that's what the question is now. Because we can get all the protections for, what, $19 since, and from Cards? And we get all the protections, but for $15, we get no protections. $25, we get them, I believe. I don't know if that may be part of the exceptions too, I'm not sure.
No, we don't get the protections because we're still under the terms of the exceptions.
So there you go, $25, no, you don't get it, you don't get the protections either way.
So even, okay.
You don't get the protections either way.
I really, I'm gonna let, William, go ahead and then I'm gonna, because this is really, um, I want the best for Pine Bluff. I want, and I don't know if there's Cards. So for me, I don't know if there's Cards. I'm reading this, but I'm not for sure if there's Cards or Waste Management, you know? So that's why I'm in a limbo because at the end of the day, I want to make sure that we protecting the people in this city. And right now, from what I'm reading and what I'm, the, the tentative, you know, legisla- you know, um, investigation, that bothers me that we're going to a contract like that. But I also know that we deserve better than what we are getting and I get that. And that's my issue. Like, I don't want to downplay what we need when I know we need more, but then we stuck in a limbo because it's not like both of y'all are fantastic, you know? Because it's not. So...
Well, we can't, we can't stay in limbo. And what I will probably do is call another meeting on Monday. Um, if any council member would like any further, uh, information, uh, you can request that from my office or from our contractors. I'll put all of us on. Uh, the chief of staff will put everybody on an email to see if there's any further information. I plan to resubmit this resolution and any member is free to submit a resolution for the direction you think we need to go in because we can't not do anything.
Right.
So that's just where we are. And if, if there's any further comment?
Uh, I did want to get some clarification because I believe, Mr. Vernon, you proposed an alternative residential rate that's lower than 25. Can you clarify that?
I was, I was just simply going to point out that the current agreement with Waste Management, uh, it states that the council, and we know this portion, has the opportunity solicit bids during our agreement. And it also gives you the opportunity to negotiate terms with us as well. So during that time period, if you wanted to call and ask and negotiate, we would be willing to do that. Just, just wanted to lay that out.
I can say here publicly, um, and I've been voted to serve in this role and deal with the day-to-day, I will sit down with Waste Management, but I'm telling you right now, what you all need to think about is a contract that includes everything that we required in the RFP for a price that is not less than what was offered by the winning bid. Anything less, I'm not proposing in a resolution. I plan to resubmit a resolution to be heard again when we meet on Monday for what the decision of the committee was. And, um, if another member, uh, um, believes that they should, uh, or if a, if a member of the council puts before this body a resolution that, um, addresses our issues and it goes before the council and it wins, I respect that. I will not sign anything that is less than the standards that we set in the RFP. It will get vetoed. And with that, I will, uh, entertain adjournment.
Ma- mayor, before we, before we adjourn, real, real quick, because what I was saying was that there, there were three, three bids. And so if the council is not accepting or will adopt the bid for Cards, then the second, then our ordinance requires that we entertain whatever contract with, uh, with the next, uh, bidder. So that would be GFL. And I don't know that anybody's even reached out to them, but that's just the process.
You're saying the ordinance says that we have to go to the next bidder?
Correct. That's in our ordinance. I was trying to get that language. I looked it up before, but that's what the, that's what the language says. So unless all bids are rejected, I don't, I don't know, uh, and I'll have to do some more research.
Well, that didn't happen tonight. Let's, let's visit tomorrow about that. And I think that if there are any members of the council who wish to, um, draft a resolution while we, um, have conversation with, uh, Waste Management, then we will do that. Um, I would like to get clarification on that language and juxtapose that with the, uh, language of the, uh, agreement and the process that we, um, engaged in through the RFP process. So if we could do that, Madam Attorney?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved to the second and we're adjourned.